Good evening and welcome to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session. It's Thursday, December 29th, 2022, 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. As a reminder, work sessions are informal meetings of the Assembly where Assembly members review the upcoming regular meeting agenda packet and seek or receive information from staff. Although additional items not listed on the work session agenda are discussed when introduced by the Mayor, Assembly, or staff, no formal action is taken at work sessions and items that require formal Assembly action are placed on regular Assembly meeting agendas. We'll begin tonight's meeting with citizens' comments. The toll-free number to call in is 1-855-492-9202, or you can use our local number, 1-907-486-3231. If you're in the audience and you'd like to speak during citizen comment, please come to the podium, sign in, and remember to turn on the microphone before speaking. If you're calling in, if you could please turn off your listening device, that will help us avoid feedback, and we'll wait a couple of minutes to see if there's any calls. Seeing no calls, we'll move right into the agenda items. The first thing on the agenda tonight is to discuss the formation of an Assembly/Providence Healthcare Committee. Mr. Conrad?
Yes, good evening and thank you. I've been involved in the last couple of years with conversations with Providence, Kodiak Island Medical Center, also Providence, the Alaska, I'm going to call it the real estate support that takes care of all of the items, the repair items and whatnot that are required by the Providence healthcare system. And what has proven is that with their regulatory requirements, that they're inspected as well as the age of the facility, and the fact that the borough has not invested in keeping that facility up, as we seem to have a theme we're talking about, it seems to me that it would be a good idea to create a committee that would actually come with the staff and meet periodically, perhaps quarterly, with Providence so that we can real-time identify the items that are in the hospital, both the facility and the equipment, that require repair, replacement. We've also talked about the fact that this is the body that should perhaps be thinking about looking at the future of healthcare in this town, because quite frankly, all of us at one time may need that hospital. So we need to keep it going. You've heard me talk to you about the problems with the sterilizers and things of that nature. I had a conversation this past week that to replace the chillers associated with the HVAC system, we're talking about 2024 or '25, before those can be manufactured and delivered and installed. This is serious, and I don't think it should be up to the staff. I think this is to the level where I believe we need this committee, so it's real-time, we have Assembly members that are involved, that are invested in this. And then we need to look at the fact that we have the '60s version of the building, we have the '70s version of the building, we've all talked about this, but we never seem to get anywhere. Perhaps if we form this committee, this would be an impetus to do a little more focus on the hospital.
Thank you, Dave. Does anyone have any questions for Dave at this time? James?
So, I think it's a great idea, but why wouldn't we do it for KFRC as well?
We can.
I mean, one committee for both. I mean, basically Buildings Committee.
We could do a Buildings Committee, because, you know, we have the same conversation going on about this building, we have the same conversation going on about the schools. I mean, so maybe we need to change the title. I don't care what it's called.
Yeah.
I just think we need to have, I think we need to have electeds involved in this rather than just staff.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So when we were talking about committee assignments, we had Jeff and Jared both volunteer to serve on this, and I guess my question, if we combined it all into one, I feel like that takes the focus off the future of healthcare portion of this. So I'd be interested in your thoughts, Dave, about if we should focus on the hospital and the future of healthcare, or do you think that should break out into something completely different?
Well, I think that, I think that all of these facilities somehow affect the community members, however, I think the hospital should take a priority. And perhaps the way we look at this is we form this committee and we put a sunset date on it. If it works, great, then we expand the committee. If it doesn't work, then we figure out what else is going to stick to the wall, you know, that kind of thing. This is an impromptu request, and I realize that. And the last thing I want to do is sit on another committee, you know, I don't want to speak for the Assembly, but I truly think this is an important committee to consider.
Larry?
I certainly, certainly think this is a wonderful idea and very, very important. And, you know, I like the comments, I like the comments, but I don't think it would be a good idea to form a general Building Committee, simply because we talk about the future of healthcare and some of the depth that you would be going into with the healthcare committee and some of the importance. It seems like it'd be very different. I support committees for these other things, but I think the focus is going to be very, very different, and you would water down, you know, how important this is. The other thing I think would be important is to make sure that, you know, I believe Providence, you know, puts money into facilities repair. And I think we need to make sure that they're putting enough money in based on what they're taking out of Kodiak to provide these services. I certainly appreciate the hospital, but I know they have another committee, I was the borough representative to the Health Committee, I think, for two years, and they talk about a lot of issues, but mostly related to the management of the hospital, and although they've touched on, you know, some of their needs, but I think we need a committee that really focuses on the future of healthcare and maintaining the facility. It really keeps an eye on whether the rent, if you will, that we're charging is commensurate with the amount of money that we have to put in to put chillers in and to take care of this facility that we have, because, you know, we don't have a lot of money. And I just sort of like the idea, I just think that it needs to be very focused on healthcare and where we're going.
Not seeing any other, oh, Scott?
I, I think the idea is good. I actually like James' idea of the multiple facilities, not just, not just the hospital. The facilities is a big part of the hospital in that, but so is KFRC, so is this building, so is the landfill buildings we have out there. So, it's, it's not like, right now, the hospital would have more of a, an emphasis, but it doesn't always have to be that way. So I like the idea of it being inclusive, and, and because of the part of facilities, I would also offer to potentially be on it to contribute my expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm going to disagree and say that if, if we need to look at a Facilities Committee or something of that nature, that it ought to be broken out based on, on the sites. We've talked about facilities and R&amp;R on facilities ever since I got on the Assembly, and, and I think we still spend a lot of time talking about it, and, and the hospital has expressed a number of needs over the last couple of years, in things that they're trying to do, or grants that they're trying to apply for, or matching funds that we were willing to contribute to it, for whatever reason that doesn't happen, or it doesn't come to fruition, and, and then we're back talking about it. So I, I think that the state of our facilities in our community is apparent to all of us that there are needs at every borough-owned building, whether that's the fisheries, or the hospital, or the schools, or the borough building, or the boiler room in the borough building. It goes on and on and on, and I feel as though, I think we have a chance to make headway somewhere if we keep our focus narrowed on what is our purpose, what is our goal, and let's start with, with one building, or one institution, whatever we want to prioritize that to be, and let's see if we can make headway before we then branch into all of the other facilities. They're all in need of, of maintenance, so that would be my two cents.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe?
Yes, thank you. I'd be inclined to giving the manager his ask here with the addition that James mentioned. I think that everything needs looked to as well, as everybody else has said. I think that having a sunset date, like you mentioned, is a good idea, just see if it works or not, but I think having the people that volunteered for those positions should be on there, and we should act on that. We shouldn't bog it down with too many more additions, to what I agree with the other members that said we should begin as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jared?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Dave's ask and with Larry and Jeff on making sure that there's a focused Community Committee for health needs, since that is one of our borough powers is, is health, so I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable ask. We have other committees that have elected representation on them to, related to the school facilities, related to landfill, solid waste, so Providence is big, and I think probably deserves its own focus. Not opposed to a committee looking at all facilities and getting a comprehensive scope, not opposed to that at all, but if it's a subcommittee of that, or its own committee, I think health services definitely needs its own committee.
Dave?
One final comment is that Providence is also in favor of having participants in this committee. I should have said that earlier, so, but they recognize, I've had conversations with Carl, I've had conversations with Dale Ron, who's in charge of real estate in Anchorage, they are all interested in pursuing this.
Thank you, Dave. James?
If I can keep my mic on. So, there's already a board, a board for the hospital. It's not a Buildings Board, but there is, there is a representative from the Assembly on that. None of that really gets discussed during those meetings, but I think that could be rolled into that, but it does have city participation, it does have all of the different facilities and different departments, all in that conversation.
Scott, did you still have something to say? Okay, Larry?
I always like listening to James. I agree with him 90% of the time, and most of everything he says. The reason committees aren't effective, there's a lot of reasons, but mostly they fall apart on the weight of their mandate. There's too much to do, they can't do it, they're not focused, and also, when you're looking at the future of health in Kodiak, it affects everybody here. It's life and death, whether they fix things or don't fix things, and have, so it's, it's very, very different. And also, the meetings that I went to, you know, looking at facility needs and looking at whether you should do it now, or whether you don't do it, is not something that the expertise on that committee, at least when I was there, that's not what they do, and they don't have that. They are important in deciding the future of health, and looking at, you know, what makes Kodiak healthy and what we need to do to make it, they certainly talk about that, but in terms of facilities needs and chillers, and how long it takes to get them, and et cetera, et cetera, is very, very different and sort of technical in nature. It's a little of both, and so I, I'm not sure that I agree with expanding that committee, because again, you've got people in there that that's not their expertise weighing in on decisions, and once again, the committee structure just splats itself out and becomes ineffective, not effective, I guess is the best way to say that, so.
I'd like to summarize. So, what I, what I'm hearing is that there's definitely interest in having this healthcare committee. I think it's best focused on just the healthcare portion and the Providence portion for right now. If this model works and we have interest in a facilities subcommittee, or a specific KFRC subcommittee, I think that that's great, and we could add that at a later date, but I think what we'll do right now is set up a resolution to adopt a subcommittee. I'd like to have three people on it. Right now, I have Jeff and Jared, so Scott's not, Smiley is not here, so if no one else volunteers, we'll stick him in there, unless we have a volunteer, is there someone else? So I'm seeing that Scott would also like to be on there. So now we have three for that subcommittee, and we'll make a resolution with a sunset clause, clause. And just to speak to Jeff's comment real quick about how facilities and R&amp;R have been at the top of our list tonight, as we talk about what we're going to do with that 11-plus million dollars, and as we're going into the next budget cycle, this is the time that we create our destiny in R&amp;R and facilities. So just keep that in mind as we're talking about that money. This is our time to make some good decisions, that we have a time to effect change in those areas. So, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. So, Dave, it looks like we're going to go ahead and I'll work with the clerks on the resolution to make that subcommittee for healthcare, and then if this is a successful model, I think it would be great to apply it to other things, once we get those dedicated people who want to expend the time on those subjects, I think we have a power to move forward in those. Is there any other final comments on that? If not, we'll just keep moving on the agenda? Great, the next thing on the agenda, we're going to talk about bulk items pickup options, and you'll see that Dave has a printed-out PowerPoint presentation for you to look at as he talks about this.
And Jenna and I are going to kind of co-present this. I will let Jenna begin, and I will give Jenna credit with putting this presentation together. I don't want to steal her thunder.
Good evening, everyone. This presentation is regarding the dumpster site issues that we've been experiencing and impact and has caused. There's a total of 17 dumpster site locations for the Kodiak Island Borough residents on the road system. This map can also be found on the Kodiak Island Borough website. All dumpster sites have experienced some sort of issues, it being caused by either bears or people, or even both. The first issue we'll be looking at are the bears. From the pictures on this slide, you can see the mess the bears leave behind when, once they get into the trash. Some bears have even learned that they are able to push down the pins and open the doors on the dumpsters. At locations where this was occurring, Alaska Waste modified the doors with a shield. This modification has been very successful. Also, there has been occurrences where people have left doors open, resulting in easy access to the trash for the bears. The second issue is a people problem. Like I mentioned before, we see people leaving doors open, people leave items outside the dumpsters, and even placing carcasses on top of the dumpsters. Not too long ago, we had problems with people leaving green waste at Dark Lake. Photo located in the top right corner of this slide, you'll see this mess. This then led people to dumping non-green waste items in this pile. Currently, the green waste, green waste has been removed and signs have been placed at the site. We have game cameras up at the Dark Lake location, and I have two videos showing people just pulling in, pulling items out of their vehicles, and then placing them beside the dumpsters. Most dumpsters in Kodiak have signs that say, "Do not place items outside of the dumpsters." They're a little bit longer, so you can see people driving and then also leaving.
The timestamp is not accurate.
Oh, yes. The batteries died, we replaced the batteries, and yes, timestamp is not accurate.
Under the cover of darkness.
We also have videos of people removing large items from the dumpsters and setting them outside the dumpsters and then leaving as well. Here is another video.
And if you're bored, we have lots of these.
And like I mentioned before, these are done with the game cameras, so the visibility of faces and things like that is a little bit hard to distinguish, which we'll later talk about with ways we're going to try to resolve some of these issues. I think you get the gist of what's going to happen, but we'll watch all of it.
I don't drive away pickup, so I'm not great.
So one item that's not on here that, while, while you're viewing pleasure, I know that we're going to be coming before you here shortly to talk about U-MOT, and that's something we may want to actually add on here, is I had a brief conversation with SEMA earlier in the week, and perhaps we need to change and say that, change the code, that if your vehicle, or a vehicle with a registered license is caught at a dumpster site, that we can go after the person who owns the vehicle. Because right now, if you go after someone with a vehicle, they're going to say, "Nope, I wasn't driving that vehicle, someone stole it and dumped stuff off and returned it to my driveway." So, I think that's something we may want to consider, is that if we're going to take this seriously, this is a people, this is a people problem.
Even shorten the videos, because it was, they were really long. They were three minutes. So, the amount of time it takes to deal with these issues is very substantial. From January to November of this year, staff spent a total of 704 hours at dumpster sites, either cleaning up the site or removing large items placed outside the dumpsters. This is equivalent to 88, 88 hour working days. The total hourly labor cost was a little over 17,000, which you can see. The cost total, this cost total does not include the burden rate to the borough for the full-time employees that cleaned up the messes. A total of 60,000, sorry, a little over 60,000 pounds was collected from the dumpster sites, resulting in disposal costs almost at $11,000. The total cost for dumpster site cleanup for January to November was almost $30,000. Staff will come up with a few options on how to fix these issues and move forward. The first would be purchasing a better quality camera. Cameras can range from 30, 300 to 80,000, oh my gosh, I'm really bad with my numbers tonight, 300 to $8,000. Depending on camera type, electric will need to go to the site unless a solar-powered camera is used. Additional costs for this option would come from time spent reviewing the footage, court fees, and lawyer fees. A good quality camera would be needed to identify the person that is littering, unless we update the code like Dave mentioned with doing a vehicle license plate instead. A second option could be to make an actual transfer station. This could, this would include fencing, additional dumpsters, and power. I spoke to someone from Fairbanks, and they mentioned from one of their more average site transfer stations, it cost them almost $900,000. At one time, Fairbanks had scheduled transfer site hours along with staffing. I was told that during that time, the facility had increased cleanliness when staffing was available. They currently do not have staffing, and they are open 24/7, just due to contractors who they hired to actually man the station, it wasn't working out for them. Another option would be to have Alaska Waste pick up at the sites. They provided a quote to pick up at the 17 location three times a week, and that total would be $15,000 a month. To address the green waste issue, staff looked into the cost to place a green waste area at Dark Lake site. For a 50-foot by 25-foot divided collection bin, a quota of $65,000 was provided. Additional costs would be to prep the site for this to occur, and once in use, the removal and disposal of the green waste, once the bin becomes full. We are looking for suggestions and direction on how to proceed, since all of these options could be, are very, can be very costly.
Thank you, Jenna. What questions do we have? Joe?
I'm in favor of that camera deal, you kept getting caught on the camera and holding these guys responsible. I think for the first 10 or 20, it's going to be really hard, you know, people won't like it, and I understand, but after that, once they see that it's going to be a regular occurrence if you keep doing this, then they'll be more apt to obey the rules. I live near a place on Salif where I see this happening all the time, where the dumpsters are full of all kinds of cabinets and whatever, you know, and that's not counting what's around it. So not only is it creating more work for the people that have to haul that out, but it's also costing us more money. When people are asking us why we're considering mill rate increases, this is one of the reasons. There are unseen, unseen costs to the things that you do sometimes, and I'm in favor, so I'm in favor of holding someone responsible for their actions. And to be fair, with all of the people I see misusing this dumpster, I have a neighbor that lives down the street from me that sprays it out all the time and to keep the bears away, you know, the smell is, there's no smell in there because of them, so there are still good people in this world as well.
Thank you, Joe. Jeff?
One question and then a comment, but the 900,000 that you were given as a number from Fairbanks, is that on a annual basis, or is that a setup of the facility to begin with?
Just a setup of the facility, and they mentioned this is probably not one of, I'm not sure, he didn't mention a site, but they just recently did one, and he said it was like an average, one of the smaller sites that they did, it was almost a million dollars.
To set it up?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The, well, I, I can tell you, I'm not supportive of paying Alaska Waste more money to clean up our dumpsters. That doesn't sit well with me at all. The, the, you know, I think we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't, is kind of how I look at this. I, I think that as soon as we try to enforce this, then I'm going to go out to the beach and I'm going to find more freezers in the ravine and couches over the embankments and debris that people are pitching that aren't going to be where the cameras are. Like, people are already are doing that. And you can go to any one of our beaches and you can find people's crap, excuse the language, but that's what you're finding anymore. And so the minute we install cameras, or the minute we institute a fine system, which I'm not opposed to either of those, like frankly, I think we ought to have progressive fines for repeat offenders, like, I'm not opposed to that, but I don't think that's going to solve the bigger, the bigger problem. I am, I have lived in a community with transfer stations, I have visited communities with transfer stations, and frankly, I think that's where, you know, when we start talking about what do we do with this, this money we got from the state, I think this is a conversation that we need to have more in detail, but I, I do think there's a way to set that up to where if people can, can haul it there, and they can dispose of it there, and we can manage it there, that, that perhaps we can minimize the amount of stuff that ends up, not even by a dumpster, but ends up on a beach somewhere, and, and that's what I'm more interested in doing, is how do we protect the island as a whole and not just clean up the parking lot next to the dumpster? And I, I do think that a transfer station is certainly worth exploring and looking at. In the, in the short term, I, I think the cameras are a good idea, I think looking at our fine structure and the U-MOT is worth our while, and, and putting some teeth into it, and starting to, and starting to fine people. We're spending a lot of money as it is right now, at $30,000 a year cleaning that up, but, but frankly, that amount of money is two months of Alaska Waste's offer to us, so I, you know, we got 10 months out of that, I'd rather have staff do it if we're going to have to do that for the time being than paying Alaska Waste more money. Thank you.
Dave?
So I've spoken with several communities that, you know, have had So I've spoken with several communities that have had, have and have gotten rid of transfer sites, and I know that's the way they do things over on the Kenai Peninsula. I had quite a long conversation with a couple of folks from Fairbanks. They are not really happy with their transfer sites because they're always trashed. The bottom line here is, from my perspective, managing this department is, we're paying our maintenance people to pick up trash, and if this is the case, then we need to change where we're utilizing our people. I need to put more people at the landfill, which means I need more staff, because that's a solid waste fund, and ratepayers are going to pay for this. This is not coming out of your taxes, but your garbage bill is going to go up. And quite frankly, I was really happy when my garbage bill went down. I've been paying that bill for 33 years, watching it go up, 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 and I generate less and less trash. I'm tired of paying for other people, so I think there needs to be some enforcement.
Larry?
Well, you never make a rule you can't enforce, and it's the first thing you learn about teenagers. If you set up a rule, you have to put the energy in to let the kids know that you're actually going to do something about it, or you teach them, no rules have any meaning. So I'm really supportive of increased enforcement, but that's going to cost a lot of money, too, because to look at videotapes, to go to court, it's civil action, it's really difficult, and it's expensive, and it needs to be done, but it needs to be done in such a way that you really solve the problem, which means it's much easier for people to get rid of their site, their stuff, easily than it is to throw it somewhere and risk. And many times, you go to the dumpster and it's full, I'm not complaining, because you learn to go at certain times when you can, or if you try to recycle your cardboard, the thing is all full, and so you end up throwing it in the dumpster. So if you're going to enforce it, then you have to figure out why people are doing it and respond that way, too. And I spent a lot of time in Fairbanks at their transfer sites, and I'll tell you, our system that we're using to collect garbage with the bear population in town is going to get worse, and we're going to have somebody really hurt by the bears. And bears are coming because there's garbage everywhere. Every time there's a dumpster out, or a garbage can that's full of deer hides and fish guts or whatever, bears are going to come to that, because that's what bears do, that's how they live. Okay? And so we have a garbage system right now, and nobody has come up with a good solution to the bears, except to shoot them. Okay? Kids, people are afraid to go on trails, people are afraid to do anything, and even we had the break-in of a house, and we've had another one in the history where a bear broke into one of the Uso homes, or, you know, at the Coast Guard base, you know, and so that's not going away. In Fairbanks, they have grizzlies, and they have black bears, and the sites that I went to were clean, but they were very large. I mean, they probably had 30 dumpsters, big enough to put a full Volkswagen into. They're like eight foot high in the back, and my wife, who's 4'11", could throw stuff in the front, although she made me do it. And they're in a row, and they have a covered area where you can recycle things, which means it doesn't go into the landfill. I mean, where you could leave a motorcycle or a chest of drawers, and anything that was put there, people could take. And then the borough came in and cleaned it all out, I think on the weekend, they just, you know, tidied everything up, and it was immaculate, by the way, because the dumpsters, you could have 10 cars on there, like 30 dumpsters in a big circle, and you just pull up to one and you throw everything. They had a construction site where you could put specific construction, because it's not illegal to throw a cabinet in a dumpster. Okay? I can throw any building supply from my house in a dumpster, and it's legal. Okay? And so to me, the transfer site, it was wired, they closed it at hours, it may have changed, so I don't have reason to doubt what they used to do, but they were clean. They had construction, they had recycling, everything was right there for you, and you could drive in and take care of it. And they had people, the Rotary Club, different clubs, if you had somebody that couldn't take their trash there, they would pick it up for them, just as a service to our fellow persons. And so I'm very supportive, and I think we have to do something like this, just to control the bear population in Kodiak, so that we don't put bait out for them every Monday morning or whenever they pick up the garbage cans, because they're there, you know, and I think Scott, those of you who grew up in Kodiak, I never saw a bear, I grew up here, until I went to college at the Woodland Park Zoo, you know, they weren't around. But now they are, and it's getting worse every year, and I think the borough has a responsibility to do something with the main attraction of those bears, which is refuse? Is that what I'm supposed to call it now, instead of the dump, it's the landfill, or whatever? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other assembly comments? Jenna?
And just a reminder, the landfill is open Monday through Saturday, 10 to 4 for residents, and you can bring up to 260 pounds of trash for free each day.
Thank you, Jenna. So Dave, we do have a standing subcommittee for solid waste that was created to deal with the contract, so that is something, and there was no sunset clause, so that still exists, and that had Mr. Art and Mr. Smith and myself on it to deal with that. It sounds like maybe Larry would be a good addition to that, because he has some great opinions. I'm trying to replace myself, Larry, he's just like, dang it. So that's, I don't know if that would, if that's something that you guys are interested in looking at. I know that you guys are just volunteered for the hospital committee, and so I know how all that goes, but is that something that would be helpful, having a subcommittee? Are you just looking for the assembly to direct something, vote on something? What's your, what's success look like here, Dave?
Well, I think you have two different things going on here. Number one, I think, yes, there's a lot of contract language that we should talk about, but I think we need to talk about where we're going in the future. Obviously, this isn't working. I know that we've had conversations, I've had conversations with sitting assembly members about potentially a facility at the Dark Lake area that will be associated with the contract, that if that could be made a transfer site and staffed properly by the actual collection contractor, it would be right there, it'd be somebody watching it, and I think that's the biggest problem, is, you know, you're talking about added costs. You put in a transfer site, you manage it, you put in a reuse area, you're handling everything twice. My fear is that if we keep things the way they are, we start enforcing it, now all of a sudden, my staff is out picking this stuff out of ditches. I don't need to send my guys into ditches to pick out carpets and bed frames and all that stuff. We need to find an answer. You're the electeds, you're the ones that are supposed to set the policy, let me know where it's going, because we seem to be in this vicious circle. I think having some thoughts as subcommittee is a great idea. We just need to figure out a direction and follow that direction.
Any other assembly comments, Jeff?
Well, with that, you know, I think that the investment in cameras right now that are high resolution, that we can put at the sites that are the repeat offenders are going to, or the worst-case scenarios, is a good expenditure of borough funds. I also think putting together a structure for fines to individuals that are dumping their garbage is a good use of time, and I think that's where we need to begin. And then we can have the larger discussion about what is the big picture solution to what's happening on the island, but in the short term, we've got to get a handle on the fact that there are some members of our community that are just dropping their junk where they feel like dropping it.
Dave?
One other thing, I know there's a thing about the bins, the E-shaped bin over there. For some reason, people have stopped putting yard waste there and construction debris, which I'm thrilled to death, people are actually reading the signs instead of shooting them. I have a feeling a part of it is because it's winter, but it's traditionally been a place where folks dump their yard waste, and we need to decide, I don't have a problem managing it in one place, but let's pick a place, and let's do something that's decent, let's chip the brush and the wood and use it, let people use it for trails, for their flower beds, whatever, but let's pick one spot, instead of having 100 dispersed spots, you know, everywhere.
Scott?
We've helped create this problem, in my mind, when we reduced from 500 pounds to 250, then went to 260. There's no limit as to how much weight they can dump here, and as we're seeing, when I see 60,000 pounds was removed, and part of that is after part of it was burned. Now, so, you know, it's, I think the landfill needs to be up to 500 pounds on there, because I take all my own green waste out to the landfill, and I got to abide by the 260 pounds. But yet, if you take it to Dark Lake, you don't have to abide by anything, you dump 1,000 pounds there if you want. What I find, and Jenna, I appreciate the video because of the two vehicles, two trucks, two pickups, that take stuff and dump there, it's loaded in the pickup, why not take it to the landfill? It's not that much farther. I don't understand that mentality, and these aren't dilapidated trucks, these are new trucks. So the, to me, part of, you know, there's this green waste site with, that we have a proposal here that could be installed for 65,000, I'm not interested in it unless we do some other things, too. First off is changing out at the landfill, encouraging people to haul stuff out there. By going to 260 pounds, it discourages them, because you can take whatever you want here. And the other thing is, we need to be looking at, one of the things is the possibility of developing a building there, the Alaska Waste is interested in leasing from the borough, where we put a maintenance facility in there, that you then have the contractor in this vicinity if you're going to do stuff here. If it's not going to be manned, we're going to continue to have problems. But with people going in and out of it because of the trucks, that changes that, and that makes it more enticing to me. But I also agree with, we need to come up with some fines on there, and I agree with the progressive fines on there. But a big thing would be trying to look at comprehensively, providing, basically leasing a facility to the contractor, garbage contractor, and then you build it into the next contract, that that's where they are. Because we're paying for a facility in our rates every 15 years, 10 to 15 years, is what we've been doing. And I think it's an investment that pays off for the ratepayers on there, but those are the kind of things I think we need to take a look at. It's a comprehensive look, not just a few things.
Any other comments?
Just a question.
Yes.
Yeah, five or seven years, I believe is what it is. I believe there's extensions, I would have to look at it, but I believe it's X amount of years, and then certain things in my past that I try to block from my brain.
Scott?
Unfortunately, I have it. It's a seven-year contract with three one-year renewals on it, and we're approximately going on three to four years into the contract, into the seven-year part.
Dave, thank you for bringing this to our attention yet again, and we'll talk about, I'll talk with the current members of that solid waste subcommittee and query the assembly to see if there's anyone new. Is there anyone else who's interested in serving on that solid waste subcommittee? Don't all raise your hands at once, it's hard to keep track of you all. Yes, we got one, Larry, thank you. Scott and Jeff, are you still interested in looking at that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the mayor's been a member of that, too, if you remember.
I don't remember Mayor Roberts being a member of that in the past, but I'll keep that in mind, thank you, thank you for that. And also, perhaps Mr. Smiley as well, because he is the Assembly Representative to SWAB, so that might be a good person as well. So we'll be sure to send out a message and see what we can get that together. We'll talk to Nova and the members who are interested in, check it with Dave's schedule and make some forward progress on that. And of course, as recommendations are brought up from that committee, it'll come back to the full assembly, so. Well, it looks like it's the night of subcommittee, so we're doing great. With no other comments on that, we're going to move forward to our last item on the agenda tonight, which is the Borough Manager Hiring Process Discussion, and if you look at the manager's report, the last page of that report is kind of a summary of the Borough Manager Hiring Process that we are at right now. Dave, do you have more you'd like to add to that?
No, I didn't know if you wanted me to go over this or not for the public, or...
I think so.
Borough Manager Recruitment began in June 2022. Assembly reviewed 18 applicants, four invited, four candidates invited to participate in interview. First round was narrowed to two candidates, Ms. Doom and Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson disclosed that she, during an interview, that she would not be available till at least December. Ms. Doom was invited to Kodiak, she, after the visit and interview, called back, I spoke with her, she declined the position after the first round of negotiations. Assembly re-directed staff to advertise for October 28th. Conversation began with me. After great amount of thought, I declined that offer. And currently, there is, Ms. Johnson, Mrs. Johnson is still, she's recently confirmed that she'll be retiring from the Coast Guard, so there's a possibility of doing second interview round with her if the assembly wishes, and there are also four new candidates which have submitted application materials. One has withdrawn. Application materials for the other three have been provided to the assembly members for review and scoring. Once evaluation forms for the applicants, the application materials are returned to Ms. Christiansen for tabulation. Summary will be provided to the assembly for a decision about further interviews, and a comment would be, is I can tell you that Ms. Christiansen is out of Kodiak for the next week, so that gives you a little bit of opportunity, but that is where we're at with the manager hiring process.
Thank you, Dave. Do all the assembly members, do you have those application packets? So we have one person that's missing that, so Nova, if you can hear us, and Irene, if we can, well, I guess it's not them, it's going to be Megan, sorry, I take that all back, or if there's someone who hasn't marked yet that we can just give a copy to Jeff as well? We'll get you taking care of Jeff. And then, so if you haven't scored yet, if you could get those scores done so we could give them to Megan next Thursday, and then after we get those scores, we're going to see if there's anyone else we'd like to interview, and then the assembly will have to decide if they want to interview Ms. Johnson as well. Scott?
I think we need to establish a start date for this. I don't think, you know, that you carry someone forward, Ms. Johnson, and then say, now we're going to interview, when we were working on that four months ago. I have a problem with that. We need to establish kind of a start date that people know it's being re-advertised. We are taking new applications, rather than this continual thing, and rate four. I don't think, we need to do something, rather than just extending the advertisement. And I think that basically, you know, with the information that was given, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Doom, that selection process ended, and we're starting a new one. So that's, you know, my feeling, that we need to get a little bit different advertisement and let AML know, too, that this is a new round, that we're taking applications for. Thank you.
Is there other sentiment on the assembly about starting over the application process and starting fresh? Is that the direction we want ahead? Larry?
I was involved in the process, and we offered a job to somebody, and they didn't accept, and did we, after that time, did we advertise again?
I believe that it was just a continual advertising?
So the question is, and again, I wasn't a part of it, but many times, you offer a job to a teacher or a principal, and you've interviewed 10 people, and they turn it down, and you go to your second choice, or another choice. You don't start all over again, you just work through the system, and so I, did the assembly officially close it? Do they feel those who were involved in the interviews, we need to... Do they feel those who were involved in the interviews, we need to go back to a new pool? But why would, if we had a viable candidate, and I don't know that because I wasn't here, would we start all over again? Unless Assembly feels that they need to do that.
James?
Well, I think that we need to have a conversation in private about the four candidates. And since Ms. Johnson has put her name back in the hat, it's almost like reapplying. It wouldn't be a second interview if we decided to go forward with one of these four or Ms. Johnson at this point, or any of the others for that matter, then we would have that conversation in executive session.
At the next meeting.
So at the, so next Thursday? So we would need everyone to have their tabulated scores and to Ms. Christiansen no later than Monday, probably after, or no, Monday?
She's gone for the next seven days.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, Dave, when does Ms. Christiansen come back?
Due back next Thursday. I would remind you, flights have been very consistent.
Uh, so it's not going to happen by next Thursday if we want her to tabulate? So, but, um, so we can still stick with the, um, asking you to have those tabulated by Thursday so that they can go to her. If you have them done earlier, please give them to her office. Um, and we can add an executive session probably for next Thursday and talk about the four candidates. Um, I, I think we'll probably have a pretty good feeling, um, about the process we want to take and the validity of those candidates, even if we don't have the tabulated scores at that point.
In her, in Megan's absence, I would ask that anybody that finishes that application process, please provide it to me so we limit the scope of who has hold of these things.
Thank you, Dave. If you do finish tabulating your scores and you're going to turn it back into the borough, please make sure it gets in the hands of Dave. Or email him if you have that technology. Scott. Is there any other discussion that we want to have? So just the takeaway from that is we're going to ask to add an executive session to next Thursday's meeting, in which we'll discuss the process for handling the hiring process for a manager. And, um, we'll talk to Nova about the process that we need to do if we're going to talk about the individual applicants because they need to know beforehand if we're going to discuss individuals in particular. So we'll get that taken care of. Is there anything else that you guys would like to talk tonight about the hiring process? Great. That brings us to Clerk comments. Ms. Irene or Nova, is there anything tonight?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I would like to, uh, thank, uh, Brian and Irene for holding down the, for, for the past two weeks and, um, they've done such a great job. And, uh, Lena just texted me and she was on the plane and she should be back to work tomorrow. And, uh, that's all I have. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Nova, and we hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That takes us to managers' comments. Dave?
Well, sticking with the landfill theme, uh, just for the public's information, landfill is closed Tuesday, January 2nd to the public. Uh, Alaska Waste will be during their normal operating schedule, so they do pick up that day. Also, the landfill will be closed Monday, January 16th to the public for Martin Luther King Day. Same thing, the, uh, the contractor will keep, um, keep that going. Um, I'm not going to go through this with a lot of detail. However, um, there is been discussion with the City of Kodiak regarding the lease for this space in this building that has started up. And there's a number of topics that came up as a result of that above and beyond. And I have those in bullets on the bottom of the second page and the third page. And these are items that the city has identified at wanting to have a conversation about. I would appreciate a conversation with, uh, with the Assembly about, uh, direction for some of these items. I have some history with some of them. I do not have history with others. The only, um, you'll have a, we have an auto contract, repair contract coming up here. This is the third time that we have put this contract out and we need to just award the contract so we can get cars and tires and things like that changed. Um, so that's, that's something pretty important to us. And I think I will, if anybody has specific questions about this, the one thing I'll point out is that our staff is looking forward to the OSHA voluntary compliance will be here the week of January 23rd. Uh, we opted for voluntary compliance. It is going to cost the borough money. When voluntary compliance finds something, we have to fix it, but it's sure a lot more palatable fixing things, um, with a timeframe rather than being fined on a daily basis until they're fixed. That is why I opted to engage with voluntary compliance. So if there's any questions, it's my fault and I'll take the blame. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions? James?
Um, first statement, um, I wholly, uh, wholeheartedly back you on the voluntary compliance. I'm glad that you're still doing that. The other thing is I remember a discussion from the Assembly about replacement of the vehicles. Have we started, um, RFPs on vehicles? Have we discussed what kind of vehicles we're going to look at? Um, I thought there was a whole discussion about that and funds were available to do that. Uh, that's all I have.
I had an initial conversation with, uh, State, uh, State of Alaska Department of Transportation. They run a pre-bid selection sheet, light vehicle, light duty vehicle list where they're all pre-bid. I was told about a month and a half, two months ago that that was coming out. I just learned last week that they are not going to publish that because they're still having difficulties getting commitments on delivery. We have a basic spec that is ready to go to advertise. We have a few tweaks. We need to put it to the attorney. But basically we're looking for a small sport utility vehicle, preferably four-wheel drive. We're looking at four of those right now. And then we're going to have to put a spec together, specific to, um, pickup trucks for replacement of pickup trucks as well. So right now I'm looking at probably five or six vehicles. We need to talk about the van at some point. We have a 13-passenger, 15-passenger van. The only thing that gets used for anymore is litter pickup. So I'm not sure that we want to keep investing in that, uh, for the summer. But that's what I have to say about vehicles to answer your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? All right, we're moving into packet review, Liz, and I want to need a break before we start packet review. Seeing no interest in breaking, we will move straight into packet review. Uh, first thing in packet review is award and presentations. We have two next week. One is the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, um, that will be, um, presented, well, has been presented to the borough. And the other is a Certificate of Recognition of Budget Preparation, Preparation that will go to Dora. So, and Dora is sitting in the back all quiet. Luckily, we'll get that done before Dora leaves for a few weeks, um, in January. After that, we have a public hearing for ordinance number fiscal year 2023-12, amending Kodiak Island Borough Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 40 Building and Lot Numbering, Section 15 dot 40 dot 080, Procedure for Addressing Newly Created Lots. And we have Seema here tonight to tell us about that again.
Good evening. So currently KIBC 1540080 Procedures states that addresses for newly created lots will be assigned during the preliminary plat review process. Many plats do not get finalized due to approval conditions or property sales because they have to, they have two years to finalize the plats after preliminary approval. Just lately, NOK had presented a preliminary plat for 60-lot subdivision. NOK pulled that plat 10 days before it was supposed to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They now have the ability to change that plat or not come back with it at all. Addressing information is sent to 10 different agencies, including fire departments, policing authorities, and public safety answering points, PSAP. Sending this information when plants don't always material, materialize could create confusion in an emergency situation that we would like to avoid. Community Development is requesting that code be changed from addressing during the preliminary plat review process to at the earliest occurrence of either issuance of a driveway permit, issuance of a building permit, or at the request of the owner. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Seema about this? This is definitely not the first time we've heard it, so we'll look forward to seeing that going to public hearing next week. Thank you, Seema. We have two contracts next week that will be going over. The first one is contract number fiscal year, well, I should say it's amending fiscal year 2020 dash 08B. Um, we're going to be looking at adjusting the fee to our lobbying services agreement with Hickey and Associates. Dave?
That was stated very well. Mr. Hickey, last year actually reduced his annual cost. And we have looked, I've had a conversation with Dora and have the spreadsheets and there were funds in the budget to be able to pay for this. So this would be for the last year. Why we're having the conversation now is this is an annual contract. It doesn't go with the, uh, it doesn't go with the fiscal year, so it starts in January. So we'll just be approving that increase back to the, the previous amount, to the 45, yeah.
Are there any questions from the Assembly about this? Seeing none, we'll move on to the second contract, which is contract number fiscal year 2023 dash 17, which is approval of a two-year contract with RTS Auto for auto repairs and tire services. We'll be looking at authorizing the manager to sign this contract. Uh, it's two years and has three additional one-year options. Dave?
As I stated earlier, this has been, uh, this is the third time this was advertised with speaking with all of the folks that are running auto shops. They're having difficulties retaining staff. And there's a couple of, um, items within our contract requirements that do pro, preclude certain people, so, uh, certain businesses because of certification. So these folks, um, put in the bid. They're very interested. We have had them do some work. I've actually, uh, talked to them and I am definitely going to recommend that we award this contract.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from Assembly? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. We have one resolution next week is Resolution Number Fiscal Year 2023 dash 18, Adopting Alternative Allocation Method for the Fiscal Year 23 Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program and Certifying That the Allocation Method Fairly Represents the Distribution of Significant Effects of a Fishery Business Activity in FMA 13, which is the Kodiak area. It's a mouthful. Dora?
Good evening. This is an annual resolution certifying that we all agree to the alternative method. There are six other communities that depend on everyone choosing the alternative method for allocating revenues for this. This is the, we've done this, the, this alternative way since 2012 or 13.
Is there any questions from the Assembly about this? Seeing none, now I understand why no one wanted to take a break. Okay. Uh, we have two ordinance for introduction next week. I think the first one's probably going to cause a little bit of discussion tonight. It is Ordinance Number Fiscal Year 2023 dash 02B of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, Amending Ordinance Fiscal Year 2023 02, Fiscal Year 2023 Budget, by amending budgets and appropriations to account for the additional school bond debt reimbursement payments received from the State of Alaska. So in your, if you guys have read it, there is a, a list of the reductions that we've gotten from 2017 to 2022 and then the staff suggestion on where we put that money. So, Dora?
So, um, the last couple of years, as you indicate, as she indicated, there's been reductions in the state's reimbursement of our bond, school bond debt reimbursement construction program. So they, last year at the last minute, they reimbursed us all the money. Um, right now, this budget ordinance will reimburse the funds that contributed money to cover those costs that we didn't budget for the shortfalls in the debt service. Um, I think the discussion at a later time would be what you're going to do with the money, um, that's allocated toward, toward any one of these, general fund and facility fund and renewal replacement, um, would be another discussion, but this at least starts the talks.
Thank you, Dora. Scott?
Dora, um, could I get an explanation on the debt service fund that you're recommending? The 173,351?
Um, the amount to leave in the fund?
Well, to, you're, we're taking it, right now you've got the, yeah, the 12 million 313,000's in there.
So the 173 is just to kind of make sure that we have a residual balance that doesn't trigger my arbitrage. Other than that, um, if you take the 1.6 for the school district and split it in half and you take the other and split it in half and the other, that was what was left. But that 173 doesn't trigger my arbitrage violation in that account, so you're welcome to allocate that where you see fit to.
Okay. I was curious how you'd come up with that.
It was just the leftovers.
(laughing) Explained well. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions about this ordinance?
Yeah, I disagree. Um, I, I understand where the, where the money come from. I guess what, what, um, I'm in, in favor of is kind of creating, I'll say, kind of as a, as a savings account because we still have the fear that our future debt service is not going to be reimbursed by the state. And, and that could cause, uh, uh, problems for us like it did the last time around. What, what I was considering and I'm throwing it out is $8 million put into savings. Right now, our, um, our general obligation bonds, which is school debt, not counting other debt that the borough has, only the general obligation bonds is about 7.5, 7.6 million dollars a year for this year and the following two. And then it starts dropping a bit. But it's, it creates a savings account to help cushion the problems that we have there. And I'll go over the, the rest of it, which is putting 4 million 239,940 into R and R. And 173,351 into the, the debt service. I didn't have a problem with. I was just curious where it had come from. The, um, which brings us to the, um, total of 12 million 313,291. We're, we're fortunate to get that funding and I don't want to see us, um, willy-nilly spending it. There's a couple of projects on here, the East Elementary Roof and North Star Roof. Um, those are things that can be looked at in the overall scope of things. I'm putting the money into the, the R and R so that we can look at it and then it comes out of there and it's easier to track it than, than, um, doing it here at this time. So what, um, what it does is create a, a savings account. Now, one of the things, one's going to say, well, as we pay down the debt, what do you want to do with that money then? Well, that's kind of going to be up to future Assembly a little bit. But what I would hope they would do was put it into the facilities fund on there and not spend any of it if we don't need it and pay it back or whatever. We've done, when I say we, it's the Kodiak Island Borough, over the last over the last 40 years, a piss-poor job of inflation-proofing that fund. And what this would do is to help provide some of that. The purpose of that fund was to generate earnings to help pay for maintenance. And we've been using it to pay debt at some time. But the principal isn't accessible in that fund, except by, I think, two-thirds vote of the general public. So I don't want to put it in there yet. I want to keep it as a savings fund. But as we pay down the debt, if we don't need it, then it can go in there after that, and that's a future Assembly decision on that. So that's some of my thinking on there. Thank you.
Are there any other thoughts? James?
So I'm going to go a little crazy here. I figured I'd let everybody else speak, but it doesn't sound like anybody, or it doesn't look like anybody else wants to. So my thought is kind of odd. Debt service increased $173,351. North Star Roof, Skylight Repair increased. East Elementary Roof, renewal replacement stays the same. Facilities Fund stays the same. General Fund is what I'm looking at in this fiscal impact piece. Basically, setting aside $560,000 of it for vehicles. David mentioned six or seven vehicles that would cover all of those vehicles, depending on what type they are, and then some, probably. The remainder of that is $4,000,000, or excuse me, And so my crazy thought is taking that particular number and setting it aside into a, if you will, a type of, I don't want to call it a PFD, but it's a fund that when there is interest earned on that particular money, then the taxpayers, the property taxpayers, not personal property, but property taxpayers will get a credit on their next year's taxes from that particular interest income. And so it would be whoever paid their taxes on time gets a certain amount off of their next or their following year's taxes off of that interest. And that is my crazy thought. And I've been trying to work on something to write it up, but I've been pretty busy these days. But that is my crazy thought, so that's all I'll say.
Thank you, James. Larry?
Certainly, it's a new problem the Assembly has had, having money to spend. I think that we have not taken care of our facilities for a long time because we didn't have the money. And every time you don't take care of a facility, you end up with a rotten soffit at East Elementary. It's going to cost a lot of money to fix. The auditorium lighting is ready to go kaput at any time, which would completely shut down the auditorium because the modules that they use, they don't make anymore, and we're buying them off the Internet. And that has to be taken care of. And there are other needs around the district. And we haven't done a complete facilities assessment on what has been neglected over time. Because if we don't do that, the savings account that someone's going to talk about is going to disappear in a moment because the state is not going to give us any money to repair our schools, and people still operate as if they're going to. One of the questions I wanted to ask you, Dave, if I could, is the governor released his budget by law by the 15th of December. What is he saying in there about bond reimbursement?
The claim is 100%.
Right.
The claim.
Well, it's significant that he's put in, you know, 100%, because if he didn't want to do that, so that's good news. And I realize nothing happens until it happens. But in any case, I think before we make those decisions, we need to find out what we've neglected. I certainly agree with the vehicles. You know, you've got to buy those things when you have to buy them, and you have to do what you have to do, or you end up with vehicles like we used to have in the district where the bottom was rusted out and you had to put a board in so your feet wouldn't fall through, you know, and you can't do that. And so I think we really need to take a look at our capital needs, our facility needs, and really make some decisions because we're not going to have the money down the road, and the state's not going to give us. And so we need to start doing long-term planning in a way that we've never had to do before because the state has come through and paid 100% of everything in the past, pretty much. And now they don't. And we, as I've said before, we are so far down on the grant program that even if they floated statewide geobonds, we wouldn't come close. I mean, we're still, you know, well over $100 million. And so we really need to take a look at our facilities. The district has spent, what, $250,000 on the sound system for the auditorium, which is not their responsibility, or anyone's, for I don't know who, but they did. And because it needed to happen. So I, in a nutshell, we really need to take a look at our needs. You indicated the vehicles, that's a need. But there are other needs around here in the borough building of a boiler. I don't know if you ever fixed it, I just heard the debate on it. But we need a report. The district needs to say, here's what's going on in our villages. Here's what's going on in our town. Here's the status of the NOAA building and even the hospital, you know. And so I think we need to do that and save as much money as we possibly can to... Bottom line is, if we don't take care of our facilities, when we have to do it, we won't have the money, and then things are going to start really hurting.
Thank you, Larry. Joe?
I'd like to, I don't have a suggestion or anything. I don't have an answer. But one thing that I'd like to bring to our attention is that the underserved, the people that aren't served as well as others, need to be, I think we should keep those people in mind, the people that helped them. Listening to the number of beds and meals that have been given to these people over the years, especially the last couple of years while I've been involved here, it's a big amount of money there. The time that's taken to take care of these people is pretty big. I think sometimes the underserved are underserved because of, sometimes they're not brought up in these kind of discussions, and we need to bring that to light a little bit more. I don't know how we can, but I think we should think about diverting more of this kind of money towards them. And that was just an observation.
Thank you, Joe. Are you suggesting, like, funding nonprofits more, or what?
I believe so, because they do, sometimes all a person needs is a little bit of help to get off of the troubles that they're in. And we have no problem helping big businesses and, you know, the rich sometimes. But where the problem is, is down below. We always talk about, hear about trickle-down economics, where if you give these people money, they'll just, it'll spread out to the rest of people. And in reality, that doesn't happen. It goes into banks and that. But if you give somebody that's needy money, that money is back out on the streets immediately, and it helps the economy. So I think sometimes we're helping wrong people. If we focus more on the people that have needs like this, we can help ourselves here. Certainly, I don't have the answers, and I don't want to imply that I do. But I would like to see a little bit more consideration to these people as well. And how we do it, I don't know, but I'm certainly willing to be in the discussion.
Thank you, Joe. Jared and then Scott?
So I really like the idea of creating some kind of savings buffer, a just-in-case, just considering the unpredictability of the governor and what, not really knowing what he'll do. I like having that insurance behind us, and then, you know, we can make it a yearly thing. And if we're feeling good that if his track record is fine, and he's keeping it at 100%, then we can talk later about what to do with this money, roll it back into facilities or R and R. But looking, thinking about budgets over the next three or four years, having that money, that makes me feel good, having that backup just in case. And then, I don't mind, yeah, dumping the rest into R and R, and then we can earmark what we want from there. Vehicles, roofs, whatever we need, or a general fund. But picking up on what Joe said, I think maybe we can look at nonprofits. Before 2017, before the state budget and community assistance program and cuts to debt service reimbursement came about, you know, we were, the borough was funding nonprofits on an average about $380,000 a year, going back like six or seven years. Once 2017 hit, though, the average has only been $180,000 for nonprofits serving these people that Joe was talking about. So if we, I would like to, you know, maybe rebalance that out. This might be a crazier idea than James's. But to look at, but to look at the difference between what nonprofits who have been consistently, who have been consistently awarded money over the past 10, 12 years, look at what they received on average annually before 2017, and then subtract what they received after, just to kind of get a difference, what their, kind of what their cut, their allocated cut has been. Multiply that by either six years or four years. But that's, you know, that's about half a million dollars right there that we could, that would, you know, I think, get at what Joe was saying. And which is really, you know, kind of a small potatoes when we're looking at over $12 million. But, and we know exactly where that money would go. And I'd be happy to work with Megan on those calculations. But I think that's something that we can do that benefits everybody. I like the plan to create some kind of system where we credit property taxes, but it only benefits, you know, a certain group of our residents. But I think taking some and pumping it back into nonprofits and rebalancing, rebalancing the cuts that they've seen over the past five years because of the cuts we've seen from the state. So I am checking off crazy idea for the day on my book.
Scott, and then Jeff.
I would like to suggest that this be pulled from the agenda for next week for introduction. I don't feel it's ready for prime time. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. I certainly support the idea of looking at vehicles. We've talked about vehicles for at least a year and a half now. They were in a budget, they were out of a budget. We thought we had funds to pay for them, and then we didn't. And I think that's a good use of money to upgrade that fleet of vehicles for the borough. So I certainly support that idea. I'm not opposed to saving some of this money, but not at the expense of watching our buildings continue to deteriorate because once you have dry rot, you're going to get more dry rot. It's not just going to vanish. And I think that if we keep kicking down the road, the can of maintenance on buildings that we know are in disrepair, we're going to have a bigger problem, and no amount of savings is going to get us out of that problem. So I certainly think that putting some money aside, based on our experience with the governor and his funding of bond debt, I think that makes sense. But I don't want to sit here and sit on money for two or three years when we have needs in front of us today. And so I think that's something that we should be considering. I think that's all I have to add at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. Dora, are we under any timeline pressure to pass this ordinance in the next few weeks?
No, I do need to get the money out of the fund by the end of June, or I run afoul of the IRS arbitrage rules. So if everyone's had their bite, I just had a couple of clarifications to ask. If you want this changed for next week, next week will be, I will be able to attend next week's meeting, but not the next two meetings. So if you feel like you want to pull it, fine by me. If you want me to try and modify it before next meeting, some general input I'm hearing is maybe put the roof repair projects in the renewal and replacement fund and leave the rest. If you decide you want to talk about vehicles or funding for nonprofits or those kind of things, those would come out of the general fund anyway, and this would put $5 million in the general fund for you to allocate that money at a separate time, so.
So I guess the question is, do you guys want Dora to try to change this so we can discuss it next week, then knowing we would have a work session and it would come up then a week after that? Or do you want to wait until we can dedicate just more discussion? So, Dora, you're out for almost all of January, once you leave, right?
I will be returning back to the island on the 23rd. I'm not sure, I'm not going to be amelioratory, but I'm not sure how much I'm going to be able to work. I do have, you know, some competent staff that, at least one that could step up. And I'm a little out of staff at the moment.
Absolutely. And you're still getting awards next week, so things are going well. So it's up to the Assembly. Do you want to leave this on the agenda to talk next week, or would you like to see this postponed?
Postponed, till after?
I understand Scott's opinion. I am looking for the other five. Anyone? Jeff?
You know, I'm happy to leave it on the agenda for next week. I'm happy with the suggestion of moving the roofs into the R and R fund. Leave the rest in the general fund, minus the amount of money to allocate towards vehicles.
Vehicles would normally come out of the general fund, so I think it's okay to have those there.
May I?
Please.
My fear is if we leave it in the general fund and we say we're going to do this, then what we're going to do is talk about vehicles in six more months. And I feel like it's something we've talked about at length.
Larry, and then James, and then Scott.
I'm ready to go next week. Based on Jeff's comments, I would like to have the vehicles, some reasonable estimate to put in the fund and get moving on that. I certainly hear a lot of suggestions, but I think the way you've described it, you know, minus allocating money for vehicles, would give us a basis for further discussion.
So do you want me to set up a project and allocate that money to a project called Vehicles?
From my point of view, I think we could.
That would separate it out, and is that what you want, rather than leaving the money in the general fund?
I would like to do that, simply because I'd like to move forward on the vehicles.
Okay.
But that's just me. I'm not Scott. I'm just not speaking for everyone.
Thank you, Larry. James?
So I think that everything that I spoke about basically leaves this the way it is. It's just the general fund piece of it is allocated into two different things. So I think that if you put it into, the vehicle piece into a project, and then the remainder of it is what we of it is what we discuss when you get back, we just take out the general fund piece of it for this resolution, so.
So your preference is to remove $5 million from the allocation and just let it's?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, the way it sits is fine, and then when you get back, we have the broader discussion about the general fund piece.
Right. And we can amend whatever you want to allocate from the general fund on a quarterly budget amendment and that.
Right. So.
As a future discussion. Yeah.
Any other comments from the Assembly? Scott?
Yeah, we allocated money in the current year's budget. So one has to look at what's there before you start allocating new money twice. That's not appropriate. So that's part of why I feel this needs to be.
Scott, are you referring to vehicles specifically?
Correct. On there. So, so there's, like I said, there was money in the budget. Now, we're, right now, as of Friday, we're at six months of the fiscal year. And a budget is a fluid document, you know? Where are we at on some of the revenues and that? Is there stuff in the existing year's budget that you pull money from on there? So I'm not in favor of the vehicles part at this time because we don't have all the information.
Larry, and then James.
Six months into a fluid budget means you have to be even more careful about making predictions about what the next six months are going to be like. You can't really do that until you have enough information. I, and if their money is budgeted in vehicles right now, and I don't know that, it doesn't really change the allocation of money because the money is going to sit there, that's not expended, and be part of the end-of-year fund balance. So it's, it's really, it doesn't matter.
Thank you, Larry. James?
So, yes, we spoke about purchase of vehicles. I don't know that we funded anything or took money from anywhere to do the funds. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we said it was going to come out of this fund or another. I know that we spoke about getting quotes on vehicles. We had long discussions about that. But I still think that we're going to be talking about this in six months because vehicles just aren't readily available like they used to be. And so we may be having the same conversation about vehicles at budget time, or even further down the road than that. But if we can get the ball rolling, which you've already done, we just have to keep that ball going downhill rather than pushing up.
Thank you. Dora, do you have enough information to make changes to that ordinance?
Yes, I believe I do. I'll put a version two in your packet so that you all can tweak it again next week.
Thank you, Dora. And yes, that most likely will happen. So tomorrow, as you all know, and so the public understands, that this will get recommended to move to a public hearing two weeks after. So it's not a decision we will actually make next week, and we'll have a couple more times to discuss it and change it, as Dora has put. So that'll be something, if you have ideas, please be thinking about that as we go forward over the next couple of weeks. The next ordinance should be much shorter. It's ordinance number fiscal year 2023-13, admitting Kodiak Island Borough Title 17, zoning, chapter 180, signs, session 17.180.010, signs, description and intent to require zoning compliance permits for certain signs. Ms. Seema.
Hello. So currently, KIBC 17.180.10 states that signs, whether it's for placement of a sign, addition of a new sign, or moving an old sign, are exempt from requiring a zoning compliance application to be filled out and submitted to community development. However, KIBC 17.180.20 and 030 contain requirements that signs must adhere to and make some signs need a building permit. KIBC 17.50.060 zoning compliance state that a building official may not issue a building permit until community development has verified a zoning compliance application. So it makes it a catch 22. Community Development is requesting to update KIBC 17.180.010, adding verbiage unless a building permit or a variance is required so that 17.15.060 and 17.180.10 work together instead of fighting each other.
Thank you, Seema. Are there any Assembly member questions at this time? Larry?
I'm sorry. I understand all the, well, I don't understand, or I wouldn't be asking, but could you simplify what this really is in a few words?
So we require zoning compliance permits, or the building department, in order to do a building permit, the building official requires a zoning compliance permit for a sign. But our code says that signs are not required to get a zoning compliance. So they're fighting each other. I have somebody that requires a building permit because it's too big, or it's illuminated, or there's some kind of variance on it, and building cannot do the building permit because there's no zoning compliance.
It's like your sign in someone's yard.
No, so we're not talking about, like, a for sale by owner sign, or I want to be elected sign. This would be a big sign, let's say, for the new mental health facility, that they had to come in and do a variance because their sign was going to be illuminated. And code says, in that zone, you cannot have flashing lights. So it required a variance that it had to go to, and because it needed that variance, it needed a zoning compliance. So we've said that it doesn't need a zoning, that signs in general don't need a zoning compliance form filled out. We just want to say if it requires a building permit from 180.20, or a variance from 180.30, that you would have to get a zoning compliance also. So we're not saying now every sign that needs to be put out there needs a zoning compliance, just if it needs a building permit or variance, that it would need one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the Assembly? Seeing none, thank you very much, Seema. The final thing in our packet review tonight will be declaring a seat vacant on the Women's Base Service Area Board from Mr. Jake Castengui. Do we need to hear anything about that, Dave? Please, seems pretty straightforward at this point. Great. So we will move on to Assembly members' comments, and we will start with Larry tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I still would like to talk about bears in Kodiak. And as the interim manager mentioned, you know, we do have health powers, and there certainly has been a tax on populance, our populance recently. And I'd like to either address issues in Assembly or sponsor some kind of public dialogue on the bear situation in Kodiak and down the road. And thank you for your clarification, Seema. I really do appreciate that. And also, at some point in time, I don't know how to really go about doing this. There are several items that I hope would be added to an agenda in the future, and is that just meeting with you privately to do that, or?
Me or Mr. Smiley.
All right. Thank you. I wish everybody a happy New Year.
Thank you, Larry. Scott?
Happy New Year to everyone. See you next week.
Thank you, Scott. Jeff?
I just want to say thank you to DOT. They've done a heck of a job keeping the road over the pass plowed and graded and are out there pretty regularly this year. So I'm not sure why, but it's very welcome. So thank you to DOT and their crew for the work they're doing.
Thank you, Jeff. Jared?
Thanks to the staff for putting together the packet today. And I want to give a shout out to the Service District One, Snow Flowers. Holy cow, they did, when we got our snow dump, it was fantastic. And they even did a little bit of the ends of everybody's driveways in our little neighborhood. And so that was, that was really nice. And happy New Year.
Thank you, Jared. Joe?
Yeah, I also want to thank the staff for the preparation here. I had a little trouble getting to the meeting here. I got used to watching Thursday night football, and I slipped my mind tonight, so, but it's good to be back.
Thank you, Joe. James?
Happy New Year, everybody, and that's all I've got. So thank you.
Thank you, James. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January 5, 2023, at 6:30 here in the Assembly Chambers. We'll be having a regular meeting. Thank you so much to the clerks for making this meeting happen. And Nova, I hope you're feeling better. Happy New Year, everyone, and we'll see you next year. Oh, would you guys like to adjourn? Yes, everyone's happy with adjourning.
Work session, you get to call it.
Well, I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't asking for votes.